I got everybody, I got everybody.
What do you think?
Um, it should be fine, except that it's not real.
About the scale?
It's not like, it's not really real. It's not, it's not geographically referenced. So, the intent is, is good.
Alright, well, why, why, I don't know whether somebody else is coming up, yeah, okay, here's where. So, uh, are there, are there any, um, anyway, let's open the meeting, uh, is, are there any changes to the minutes?
I want to take the E off my last name.
I always do that, I apologize.
Other than that, I can have it.
Sure, where did, uh... Oh, there it is.
I don't want, yeah, I don't.
Okay, any other changes? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move the minutes as amended by Tim Cook with an E. Uh, is it our second? Okay, I was in favor.
Paul Stine.
So with, with the, uh, agreement of, of, of the board, at the pleasure of the board, uh, I think I, I emailed that I would be meeting this morning with, um, Brian Callman, who was with NHEC and recently moved to CPC NH. So met with him and Stephen Doig. And is it, do I have your permission to review what we went on? And, um, for anything where, you know more about a lot of this than I do, so anything where I'm misspeaking, I, I don't stand behind.
Yep, I'm still on the learning curve, but I'll do my best to back.
And I, I'm just doing my best here to.
So who was on in the meeting?
Uh, uh, Brian and Stephen and me.
Okay.
And Brian's last name is?
Uh, I can't, I can't reveal that. No, he's, uh, Bryman Callman, C.A.L.M.A.N.
And he works for N.J.C.O.A.
He's, he's, no, he did, and he's, he's joined CPC NH.
Is he, is he the CEO?
Uh, I didn't.
The new CEO's first name is Brian. Oh, my gosh.
I think part of the rule that...
Is he his autograph?
Well, no, I, I think, I think the new thing at CPC NH is that everybody is referred to as Brian. No, I, I, I don't know.
He used to be the mayor of Lebanon, right?
Okay, mov- moving on, okay, mov- moving on, anyway. Uh, and this'll sound.
That's Cliff Belo.
Corny, 'cause I'm, I'm kind of rea- I'll be reading mostly, but, uh, just so that I didn't forget, so. So Brian recently joined CPC NH from NHEC. CPC NH is a not-for-profit that offers aggregate power to municipalities through various energy plans that allows both for more local and community control and for people to opt out of participating. CPC NH is a not-for-profit benefiting the interests of community members instead of corporate stockholders. So I mean, of course, I'm getting this from, from them, so you can use whatever filters you, you want. Uh, the rates they are offering, uh, as, uh, are, there are four. One is the current RPS, which is about twenty-five percent, what the range that Eversource uses. Actually, I think NHEC is forty-six percent, but that's the required present amount. Uh, the second rate is thirty-three percent, the third is fifty percent, and the fourth is a hundred percent. Once the energy aggregation agreement paperwork has been taken care of, and please confirm whether this is true, a town can sign a cautionary agreement choosing one of the rate options for the next three years.
So, yes, I mean, the process is, we've had a joint powers, um, agreement signed with select board that gives us access to the CPC NH resources with no commitment.
Right.
The, we are putting together, he is the new CEO.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, we're putting together an agreement with all those stipulations to take to the town meeting. And that has to be.
That would have to be before we could go further.
Right, and after town meeting approves it, we can put together, um, I mean, the, the level, there's a default level that the town would be offered for how much green would be, but people can opt up and down.
Right. Individuals can opt up and down?
Individuals can opt up and down.
That wasn't clear.
I see. So in other words, the town would decide what level, the whole town would go into, in that?
What the default is.
Oh, I see.
The default, you mean the...
So that's what you would get if you didn't opt out?
Correct.
That's, I mean.
But you, but you could opt out or opt in for a different level?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, but the town would decide what that level was?
I mean, I think that that's what we're working through, what to offer the town. Um, m- many of the towns have gone for the twenty-five percent as granic, basic. Um, Hanover went for the higher thirty-three percent as their default.
Okay, right. So there are currently thirty-four members, um, of CPC NH, including Lime, with twelve communities already using, uh, energy through them. Is that consistent? Okay. Energy is provided via, um, renewable energy credits, which, um, emphasize do support and incentivize not only solar projects, but there are a lot of other important smaller components, and I'm not sure all smaller, but, um, like small scales hydro in the region, which are an important component of the supply mix that are, uh, essentially enabled, uh, through the REX. CPC NH is interested in offering lower-cost options, education, and going beyond just solar, to use a variety of means to minimize energy impact. And they pointed out the single best way to impact energy usage is to use less. CPC, uh, NH is interested in supporting that goal as well. Um, one option, and, I mean, I'd like to hear, we just went through this briefly, but it sounded interesting, one option through CPC NH is for a town to retain something called a discretionary reserve. Are you familiar with?
They, I'm not sure about the finances at that, at this point. What, what there is, after you start buying power, there's a certain percentage that CPC NH is gonna reserve so that, to cover all the administrative costs, so that no administrative costs wind up coming back to towns. And I'm not quite sure.
So this is, I think, a little bit different. The town pays them something called a discretionary reserve, um, which can be taken back later. I guess they get the use of the money for a while. Um, but it, it can come back to the town, um, and then be used for other related goals. We didn't go into great detail, but it sounded very intriguing, is, uh, we, we talked about large batteries later. And, uh, he said, for example, accumulated discretionary reserve could conceivably set up a large battery, through this reserve fund. I, I asked if he would come and talk to us, and he said he'd be willing to, but, and I've heard this name before, so maybe I heard it through you, but, he said Henry Herndon, do you know?
Yes, Henry Herndon is the, in the point guy that we've got.
So, yeah, he said he would be a good person.
He's very responsive and very knowledgeable, yes.
So if we want him to, to come, he would come. And another thing, uh, that was stressed was, um, the, that the energy landscape in five years will make today's options seem old-fashioned, that things are changing extraordinarily quickly, and what we're assuming today are assumptions. Then we, uh, then we went on to batteries. So, uh, I just did the best I can here, so forgive me. NHEC recently made a purchase of services arrangement. So, oh, okay, he's, he was, he was with NHEC, and so he was telling, uh, uh, Stephen was very interested in battery information. So this is something that was done at NHEC before he left. They made a purchases of services arrangement, so, uh, it's almost like leasing. They, instead of having, committing to buying the battery and being liable and having to support the battery, there are companies, I forget the name, it's something like OG or Oja, Ogon or something, um, that actually own the battery and, um, they made a purchase of services agreement with a company, uh, that owns and distributes the battery power that way. NHEC is not liable for the battery itself. Uh, NHEC let the asset owner take a percentage of the power to use as much as possible to manage a required steady flow of load through the system that they need, um, as part of the arra- arrangements. They said that arrangements like this are market-specific, and so conceivably, an option even for Lime. Uh, using untapped capacity of batteries, whether commercial, EV, or residential, are great ways to maximize battery use. This is no longer limited to just balance it, balancing energy between highest time of need versus low utilization. For instance, in India, they are converting their school bus fleets to electric. Of course, school buses only run twice a day. The rest of the time, they will function essentially as, uh, batteries or energy sources for general use. This is, is called value stacking, and it's taken off in Europe, too. Uh, batteries have two main measurements, capacity and, and time. That is what it can produce and how, for how long, for instance, you know, whether it would be two and a half megawatts, uh, that might run in, you know, any, any number of hours. A two and a half megawatt battery is made up of two one and a quarter megawatt batteries, so that if one goes down, the other can run. These two batteries in turn, uh, are made up of a hundred, hundreds of little ones that in turn can help keep things running if there's, um, uh, problems. Uh, s- super interesting to me was that the size of a battery like this can be as little as five hundred square feet.
For, for one megawatt?
Uh, I believe, you know, I think, don't hold me to any of this, but I believe they were talking to, talking about two and a half megawatts.
That's huge.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, again, I wanna, I wouldn't wanna confirm any of it, but that's, that's what I understood. Yeah, it's incredibly small, but he was emphasizing how small it can be. Um, and they said batteries themselves are changing. Current batteries depend on components that are sourced in environmentally damaging ways from a limit, limited number of countries that could use their supply as little levers. Uh, something that's now seems to be conceivable are sodium ion batteries. Um, and I'll make the pun, they're the next wave. Uh, there's, uh, as, as, uh, one of them put it, there's plenty of salt in the oceans, so, uh, that's, that's a very promising technology. Um, and they did point out downsides. Uh, the, the type of battery that we're talking, that I was talking about here is still new, and there have been some glitches. Service providers are still learning and can run into parts delays and connection problems, especially with some Chinese components. Uh, that said, it's not stopping things, this approach is becoming increasingly utilized. And then we had some answers to submitted questions. Um, the, generally, the, the amount of, uh, the nu- number of kilowatts available off of NHEC's wires is five hundred. But you really, he, he emphasized, you have to look at, um, s- specific areas on, on their wiring. But, but, uh, that's generally.
Five hundred kilowatts?
Yeah.
That's half of, half a megawatt.
Yeah, yeah.
So that means off their wires.
Yeah, you asked, you, you asked the question.
How much they could add, how much electricity could be added to the grid?
How much it could use.
Yeah, how much they can handle.
Yeah, how much you can handle.
So you could add five hundred kilowatts.
Um, and you.
More than one of those, or just one?
He made it, uh, again, uh, don't shoot me, I'm just a piano player. Um, my understanding was that, I asked him, you know, along your, your wiring, depending upon where you plugged in, what, what could you get? So my impression was that it was all along, you know, like if, if, I don't know whether right next to another place, but if you wanted to do a few or in different places, but I, I, you know, we would need to talk to them to verify that. Um, and, and you, um, they're locally produced, as I'm sure you knew anyway, uh, locally-produced energy does not supply local usage, that's, that's, goes into the grid and it's gone. Um, you asked if there were any, um, special incentives or programs for battery saving. And it, they have something called a transactive energy pilot program using high-value battery or vehicle, uh, storage. I, I think it's something like, I, like what Liberty did in Lebanon a number of years ago.
And I think, I think, I believe Green Power is still doing this, they're leasing batteries to people for like fifteen dollars a month.
So I don't know exactly what form of mistakes, but they, that was the answer to your question. Um, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of my presentation, so.
Great job, thank you.
Please, please, no, really, couldn't have done it without, without. All right. So, um, let's get on to the main refrain. Do, does, shall we have the public speak to us first, or, or shall we have the public speak to us later?
See if the public wants to speak to us.
Does the public wanna speak to us now, or later, or both?
Always.
All right, well, go ahead.
I'll, I'll just, I'll be repeating myself. It seems pretty clear that energy aggregation is the way to bring green power to the town of Lime through CPC NH, or maybe our own system, but probably CPC NH. And we don't have to do anything more. Well, let me back up. Rooftop solar, accessory solar, makes a lot of sense, because it, it avoids the delivery charge. You get the energy without a delivery charge, without paying for it, you've created it yourself. So, that's allowed as a matter of right now, and we'll continue with that. But to go on to solar arrays, which are going to be small, and I think inefficient in the town of Lime relative to what we can get on a wholesale basis through CPC NH, tells me that the town, that the planning board should move on to the housing chapter. The, uh, the solar energy chapter of the solar energy need has been solved. You don't need to do anymore. As they used to say during the Vietnam era, declare victory and go home.
Um, just a, a thought on, on, you were saying CPC NH would be a, a good thing, and, well, if Lime, probably better than if Lime did it. So I think, I think long-term, it would be great if Lime had its own. But I remember Beth said, Beth McGuinn from Revision said that with, on average, with their large arrays, it, it's like a three-year process. So, um, yeah, that's, that, the aggregation system that's already existing would be much quicker. But I, I do think it'd be great for Lime to, you know, not just throw that option out down, down the road.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that a little bit. First of all, just to give you a little background, I had a almost forty-year career in financing energy developers, both conventional and renewable, including the, dealing with the whole issues of siting, and also the issues of financing. And while it seems like a wonderful idea for Lime to want its own, it's almost putting the cart before the horse. I, first, a couple of things. We have a couple of sort of vague requirements of what would be a good site, but just because something is a good site doesn't make it a great site. And no energy developer would go about saying, I'm gonna build a solar array in Lime. They're gonna look broad and wide, looking for efficiencies, size, being near much bigger transmission than we have. And then, when they have to finance it, size counts hugely, because there's so many costs that are by the array unit, not by per megawatt, per array. And when you have a big array, it's spread off on a much bigger basis. I don't think, I think we're put, I think we're just going totally backwards by saying, let's put something in Lime. I think we need to look at something bigger, and frankly, we don't have the expertise here in Lime to figure out what we're doing in any case, so. Just wanna throw that out, that CPC NH has a lot more expertise than we do, and they're gonna be contracting with experienced energy developers with staffs who know how to site a, site a power plant.
Okay, uh, much appreciated. Do you have anything?
No, um, I think, uh, just in general, um, experiencing the changes that we're all aware of and concern that we're all aware of, not just cost. I had one monthly bill this winter for four hundred and fifty dollars for my electricity, which was pretty astounding. Yeah.
You should turn the lights off.
Yeah.
But are, are you, are you on Eversource as regular?
And I have solar panels, but they were covered this.
Oh, oh, okay, so you, you were locked into Eversource because of your solar panels?
No, no, I did, I have since changed to direct energy and so forth, so.
Oh, so you were, you were able to switch over, even though you, you, so why couldn't you do that?
I don't know.
Well, you, you two should talk.
And people, people haven't been able to either.
Well.
I just applied to direct energy and they accepted it and approved it and...
Did you tell them you had solar panels?
They, they didn't ask.
I don't know if they asked.
Cause I, I had a call today with somebody trying to sell me energy, and I just said, well, what do I do? I have solar panels, and they said, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to waste your time. So, hmm.
Well, anyway, you were able to do it, fantastic.
And I think, and the question about the large solar arrays, um, I think we're part of a larger community, and we have an obligation to contribute to that community, the way I see it. And if we have an opportunity to put in a large array, which would benefit the farmer or the landowner, um, we should do it, even if all electricity doesn't come to Lime, it goes somewhere in our larger community. And I, so I'm all for it, I think, you know, I mean, I heard that you hadn't gotten any public, uh, feedback, so I'm here to get that feedback. And a lot of people I talked to agreed that the more we can do, the better. There's no one simple solution, there's no one answer to our problems. But our problems are getting much worse, much better. Than we're doing to, making efforts to keep up with it. We're not changing fast enough, as fast as our climate is changing, as bad, as fast as everything else is going downhill. So I think we need to do as much as we can, enable as much as we can within the confines of our zoning and sensitivities, et cetera. But I think we, we have an obligation to do something.
Okay, good.
Yeah, sure, I'll make a few comments. So I guess maybe just responding to David Perelman, um, I agree that size matters when it comes to these projects, and there are great economies of scale with solar. Um, but also just point out that New Hampshire has this group net metering program, which is specifically tailored to small systems, right? I mean, you can, you can go up to a megawatt, but no greater, um, unless you're, uh, involved with a municipal-only system, in which case it's a five-megawatt limit. So, in that case, um, the size of the plant is sort of pre-established by, um, state legislation. And those programs, um, sure, I mean, small solar like that, one-megawatt solar is more expensive than a fifty-megawatt plant, but these programs, um, this group net metering program offers a higher level of revenue to compensate for that greater cost. So, I don't think we can necessarily make a blanket statement that Lime is not a good place for solar simply because, you know, really what you wanna do are twenty-five or fifty-megawatt plants. Um, you know, there's room for one-megawatt plants in Lime, and they could be well compensated through a group net metering program. So that was one point, and then I guess responding to David Robey's, uh, point that energy aggregation is the way to bring green power to Lime. Um, I don't wanna bash this CPC NH program, I think it's probably a good thing, and Lime should go down that path. But I think we heard from John that, um, they're gonna bring green power in the form of REX. And I'll just point out that, uh, REX, qualifying REX can come from plants that were built as long ago as, as I think, two thousand and six. Um, they can also come from, um, you know, many different types of plants, including like landfill gas and things like that that we may or may not wanna support. And really, the only way to kind of bring about, um, environmental change or progress on the grid is to build new renewable resources. And my guess is that CPC NH will be supplying their, their participating municipalities with REX that are coming from pre-existing plants, maybe very old plants. Um, and therefore, the environmental impact of that purchase will be, you know, essentially zero.
I, I would just, I've been around the rec room many, many times. And I, and been totally convinced of your position at one point and other positions. And I think it's just one of those things that, that there's, there's real, really no, you could say, uh, either, you could take either position.
Yeah.
I'm convinced at this point, you know, having, having been convinced of your position and, and just kept talking to people. I was convinced at a certain point that this is basically a fraud, um, that it was, it was greenwashing.
Yeah.
I'm convinced now that's, that's not a fair portrayal.
Yeah.
That, uh, while there might be some older, um, places that, that are, are getting REX, the, most of them seem to be enabling and incentivizing not only solar, but, uh, other, other small, uh, purveyors that are, are crucial pieces. Um, so I, I would, I don't, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I, I'm not, I, I don't quite see it as that extreme.
And I, I'm certainly not calling REX a fraud, I mean, I, it's, it's a regulated system.
No, no, I, I did, I, I felt that way.
Yeah. Um, but I, you know, we'll just point out that the cheapest REX will be the oldest REX, and, you know, given the price is no doubt a consideration here for CPC NH as they launch their program, my guess is they're gonna look to old existing plants, buy the cheapest REX they can get, and tell these communities that they're greening up their electricity supply, which theoretically they're doing, but again, they're not bringing on new capacity into the market.
Right.
At least not immediately, down the road they might.
At, at, yeah, exactly, because at, at the same time, it may be true that they're gonna be starting with the, with the lowest-hanging fruit, but that's gonna disappear, and, and I think it'll disappear rapidly because of the pressure for more.
Can I speak to that?
Please.
I was at the CPC NH member meeting last month or six weeks ago. They are planning, you know, there's a, they have to accumulate some funds through actually selling power for a while. And the plan is, um, they're starting a fellow off going around the state trying to find sites for new solar that they would be using some of those funds to, to enable, to leverage new, new development, so.
Right, and some of that development could happen in Lime potentially, right?
Absolutely, if, if there was something here, they would buy it.
Yeah.
Let, let me just add one more thing, as, as a member of the Lime Electric Aggregation Committee, we were going through the, our plan for joining, for approving CPC NH that's gonna go to the, um, town meeting, and it was clear from the plan that CPC NH plans to engage developers to build new. It is not, you know, and I agree, the rec, the existing REX are gonna run out and run out pretty quick. So, and the, and yes, we could build Lime, but there are likely to be better sites somewhere else, don't know.
I guess the point is, though, is it the planning board's job to make economic choices for people? If they wanna put in a solar array that doesn't make economic sense to you, is it all right? I mean, do we, do we, we shouldn't? I mean, do we, do we, we shouldn't just stop them because we don't want, we?
No, our, our, I mean, we have to, we're getting, we've gotten an education and contextually, um, it's important that we understand this stuff, but ultimately what we're doing is, is zoning.
Right.
Um, so, yeah.
We can't make economic judgments for citizens.
I think, you know, there, there can be an element of considering what's best for, you know, what's best for the zoning that might encompass some consideration of that, but it's, I don't think it's central.
Just a basic question, I guess to Mark. If we have net metering, um, when the solar, which I guess is only 33% of the time, when the, in the night when it shuts down, where does the, the electricity is coming from?
The grid.
The grid.
Yeah.
So, so 67% of the time, we're still using, if we're on ever source, we're still using bad electricity. Okay. I just want to sort of make sure that everybody understands that, because we're not, we're not really a hundred percent green.
Yeah, that's right. And, 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 you know, when that goal was set, um, I think the idea was that you would, to get to a hundred percent, you would sort of match your consumption with your renewable generation on an annual basis. And so, um, in other words, you wouldn't do it on an hourly basis. Doing it on an hourly basis is, you know, the most stringent you can get. And I don't think that was what anyone was talking about back when we set that goal. I think it was more like annual matchup, which means that you sort of ignore this diurnal cycle, you know, when the sun's shining and when it's hot.
But now, those of us that are on, with direct energy on a hundred percent green, is it the same thing? I mean, we're.
That's, that's going to be the same thing. All, all they're doing is looking at what you consume and then they'll go out there and buy REX that match that same amount that you consume. And those REX may be produced at completely different times than you're consuming, so.
Right. So the actual electricity that we're using is not.
Yeah.
Well, that's confusing. So you're, you're saying they'll look at what we consume and they're covering a hundred percent of what we consume?
Yeah, they're, they're matching megawatt hours with megawatt hours, but not looking at, they're, they're not trying to sync up the.
Time is the same.
The timing. Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's even worse than that. I mean, if you have some basic knowledge of physics, there's something called Kirchhoff's law. And, you know, electricity flows, wind flows and, uh, you can't, you can't say, this is a red electron, this is a green electron. It doesn't work.
Right. But you can, you can line up usage with use.
Yeah. And the, the bigger timeframe that you line it up with, the easier it is to do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in terms of the, the thing that passed at, at the town meeting, we've been over this a number of times and, and I think, well, I'll speak for myself, my takeaway was that it's aspirational. Um, it's not an exact thing and it, if there's, if there's something for the planning board to take away from it, it's that there's, just put really simply, there's interest in, um, Lyme getting green renewable energy. I seriously.
Yeah, and.
Heading in that direction.
Yeah. And I guess one thing I've sort of been hearing is, you know, there seems to be this, um, you know, two sides here, like some people want to see kind of local solar, some people are fine with, um, going with CPCNH. I mean, I think, I think that's kind of a false choice. I think we could do both and I think we should probably take it as a given that we will be joining CPCNH. I mean, my guess is that'll go through. Um, and so the question really is, you know, can we also do onsite solar here in Lyme?
Yeah, so, uh, again, just speaking for, for myself, uh, my feeling is, is that we, we can, uh, but, you know, my view of it is probably be more limited than yours.
Yeah.
Um, you know, in terms of potential for, for net metering, my concern, a, a major concern I have is that anything that's going to be done now will probably have about a three-year lead-in. If, if what Beth McWynn said, I mean, I believe her. She, you know, she wasn't soft pedaling anything.
Yeah.
Um, so that's three years. And from, just as a layman who's like just been immersed in this for a year, so I'm no expert, but I've been beat about the head with this stuff. And one of my takeaways is that, uh, obsolescence for a lot of this technology is around the corner. So one of the attractive things about CPCNH is that the liability and the, um, well, let's just say the general liabilities don't, uh, have too big an impact. Um, it's more of like a service contract and, and that's very, very attractive. I, I do think that, that it would be nice for people or, or to have some options somewhere in Lyme for, at least to try out for people to, to have group net metering. Uh, I'm, I'm less convinced about the, the really large arrays.
I, I, may I ask a question of Brian?
Mark, maybe?
Certainly. Isn't a REX a REX a REX regardless of the source? You, you speak of, uh, older REX, REX being cheaper. Isn't there a market for REX and the market price is the same for all REX?
Well, so there are different classes of REX that they, they do break it down.
I'm talking about the, in New Hampshire, class two, class one.
Yeah, yeah. So you, you're right, actually. Um, you know, that covers the full, um, range of vintages going back to 2006 and you're actually, uh, exactly right that, um, any New Hampshire class one REX should have basically the same price. And so, you know, I guess the point is within that category, um, you know, you've got a mix of REX coming from new plants, you've got a REX, a mix of REX coming from very old plants. And you don't, you don't necessarily know what you're supporting unless you talk to CPCNH and say, can you tell me exactly what plants your REX are coming from, which they may be able to tell you. I, I don't know. They should be able to.
Yeah, Eddie, we've, we've been around this REX thing. Let, let's, let's sleeping REX lie.
But the fundamental point is that we can get green energy through, look, I, I was a proponent, I've been a proponent of solar power all along. Mark and I talked about the possibility of creating a one megawatt system.
I remember.
And, and the numbers don't work relative to CPCNH or direct energy with REX. REX is the way to go. And, you know, building solar arrays in the town of Lyme, other than solar arrays that provide direct energy to the, to the, uh, solar owner, can't compare with, with, uh, with what we can get from CPCNH. And if, and if we want to feel good about supporting solar arrays, we could feel just as good about supporting solar arrays in Africa. The atmosphere of the world is the same. The savings, wherever the savings are in the world.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, let, I think it's fair to say we're all on this, we may not agree about particulars, but I, I, my impression is that we are all on the same page. We're all on the same team here. And I respect, uh, the view, you know, that Sue expressed. It, it's just, uh, in, in the mix of, of views, but we're, we're all, we all want to see this address.
We want to see green energy and the punchline is that we can have green energy without having a negative impact on the town of Lyme.
Okay. Uh, who wants to go first?
My, my concern is, I have time now to listen to a lot of different scientific presentations and so forth, and what I'm hearing is very distressing. And it's my belief that we've already reached the tipping point. And that's not, you know, we're going to need every resource available and bold steps and bold moves to try and alter this course that we're on. And we shouldn't deny anybody anything because there's a better option somewhere. It's, everything is in the mix. We need to include everything we have, everything we can possibly do, because it is getting very dire. I mean, who is it, when was the last time you had over 90 degree temperatures in May? How many hundred degree temperature days are we going to have this summer? And this is just the beginning.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you'll get an argument about that.
You all agree.
Yeah, again, I think we're all.
We've got, to take bold measures. We've got to step out there and do something.
So John, if I could, I guess, um, you know, what's the planning board's role in this? I mean, we can't, we can't help with the technological, uh, things. We can't really help with the economic decisions. I mean, we shouldn't recommend something that's ridiculously expensive, but, um, what, what is our role? And I think the only thing we can do is decide, do we want to change the ordinance to do anything beyond what, what we currently can do? And I took Tim's point, I actually circled Tim's point, that there's no need for a questionnaire and we should move on to housing. That's, that's a legitimate path to say, people can do small and medium sized arrays right now.
Medium?
Um, they could, if they.
Add up to 20,000.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, you mean with, with last year's.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, if you could build a barn that big, you could build a solar array that.
Right.
And for us to do anything at all, we do have to get feedback from the town. We have to do some kind of questionnaire. We have to figure out what the town actually will stomach, because I hear several people espousing somewhat different, opposite, even opposite views, in a friendly way.
But it's really surprising for, that Lyme, in Lyme, people would have different opinions.
I would never have guessed. Right. But in order for us to propose a successful, uh, uh, successful change to the ordinance, we want to make sure that the Lyme share of town is going to vote for it, because it's no fun at all to work really hard on a change to the ordinance and get to town meeting and have it not adopted. So I think our choice now is to say, do we want to try to amend the ordinance at all? Do we just want to wait and see what the LEAC comes up with? What we're going to do? Um, and our, our choices are constrained to what's it look like? Where might it go? How much space can it occupy? Those sorts of things. And the economics, the developer is going to have to figure that out themselves.
Yeah, I don't think, in, in all the questions I read, I don't think anybody was, maybe, maybe somebody did, but they were generally along those lines, the questions that people suggested.
So how long will it take us to put together the questionnaire, to get it out, to analyze the results, then to make a decision from?
Well, you know, put.
Then, and then make a decision on what the wording of any change would be.
You tell me.
Well, thank you.
He said it.
Well, um, I feel like we really don't need to ask the town about the small and the mediums. And all we need to ask about is the large. And I thought that there were some really nicely worded questions, which were more like a market study for like who's going to, you know, go with green energy. And that's something that we can't, you know, we don't, that's more of an energy committee type of question than I think ours, because I think we should keep ours. Um, I think we should ask the town about large. And if it's resounding like NO, then let's not waste our time. So I think it's worth a little time to put out the questionnaire and see what people think. And then have a separate large solar energy system amendment that can get voted down or up, but won't mess with the things that, you know, we feel really comfortable with, which is the rooftop and then people's accessory solar uses.
You mean like what we had in last year?
Yes, exactly. And.
So is, is everybody?
So I'm just, the, the addition, I mean, we're already doing house and cities.
Right.
So there was an addition of up to 20,000 square foot.
Right.
In the last, so you're, you're saying go with that?
Yes.
And then do a separate large?
For the large, which is the standalone, that's the principal use.
Okay. The only thing about.
Is in that metering situation for neighbors?
No, no. No, the, the problem I have with last year's, um, the way we did it was the panel measurements. There's no way to, to know and it's, let's just say, it's, it's really unclear to figure out what the actual size of the array would be. I think we should, you know, I'm fine with the general setup, but I think we should use actual measurements. Um, I had, I was really confused by it myself and people I spoke to were under the impression, because that's what it said in our, in our mailing, that we were talking about one acre maximums, which they seemed pretty comfortable with. And then it came out later because of a panel measurement process that we were talking, you know, maybe two and a half, three acres. So I think we need to be much more clear in, in the measurement, um, so that the public and people on the board can look, this is, you know, when we give them a figure that's confusing, that, that they can't make a good judgment. So that, that's important to me.
So go with acres rather than the square footage.
So that, so that when I tell you, you know, I, I'm coming from the planning board and I'm telling you, this is going to be a one, two, three acre array. That's what it is.
That seems to be the language that we're hearing.
We're all, of course.
We should probably, and it's a little easier to grasp.
It's a lot easier.
And, and so when you're saying one, two, three acres, you're talking, you're, you're including the space in between the.
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm using that as involved acreage.
Yeah. And so I guess my only point on that is, if you do it that way, you might have someone, you know, cram the modules as close as they possibly can together to maximize.
Well, uh, one, one option we have is we can, uh, create, create criteria that would not allow that.
Right.
I mean, don't most of the installers have some sort of standard method of.
Yeah.
Spacing, et cetera?
Yeah.
Just to, to, to counteract shade on one from another.
You have to be able to run it lower between them.
But there's, well, there, there's kind of a trend in the industry as land costs go up to packing things more tightly. I think I sent you guys pictures. There's even a mounting system now where they just lay them flat on the ground side by side.
Yeah.
No space in between them at all.
Yeah, and, and they're, they're bad actors in, in any industries, but to your point, I, I think we could, we could address that and hope we could address.
But at least at this point, we're close to, you know, what is like a half a megawatt, two to two and a half acres, five, uh, excuse me, no, uh, two and a half megawatts.
Well, we, we would have to.
Five megawatts, four to five.
You mean in terms of what, how much acreage is?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, five acres. Well, I mean, Beth said five to seven, uh, for, for one megawatt. That the, um, Solar Energy Industries Association says five to 10 acres. Um, so.
And Curarge was 4.6 acres for one megawatt.
Right. They had, and, and that, what, what Beth said is, in that range is an ideal, if you get an ideal site.
Yeah.
Most sites are not ideal and revision doesn't use fencing. Um, so, you know, I think somewhere in that range.
But, but even so, if we're going to poll the town, it's still going to be more, it's going to be easier for them to understand if we talk in terms of acreage, because they can get a visual picture.
Exactly.
Of that and they can know whether, no, no, I don't want 20 acres of solar panels, but maybe four or five I can, I can tolerate.
Right.
So it would be easy to sort of chunk that out in terms of those.
It's a much clearer communication.
I think that the, um, the points that are raised about, oh, we have the, um, being able to buy through direct energy or, um, CPCNH is great, except for that people are sitting on their hands and not doing that. And that's where I see like, um, the energy committee should be doing more outreach to say, look, we've got a town goal and everybody needs to participate. And if it means you take a little bit of time to make a phone call to become a green energy consumer, please do that and to make that really easy. Or if you need some help, we can help you. So that's something that the planning board shouldn't do and I don't believe we should include that. I thought the questions are really good, but I thought that, that was more of an energy committee kind of questions, like where are people, you know, hiccuping on not doing this themselves? Like where are people, you know, hiccuping on not doing this themselves? So, there's that, and then also another thing I'll say is that even if Lime were to ever get a one megawatt system, which would not, you know, provide everyone in town with green energy, it is, I think, helping, because we're going to run out of rec sometime. And unless we contribute, or at least make it possible to contribute in that way, I don't think that we can complain about it.
So, you know-
So I think, you know, it may not be economical, but that's for somebody else to decide.
I have a, I have a level of discomfort with, with the one megawatt site. Because I don't see, I don't, I don't, I don't see, yeah, five acres. Because I don't see how to, um, regulate that in a way where we're really, you know, five acres is a significant amount. If we could say, okay, here's, here's where you can put this five acre, uh, five acre site. And we'd like one here, one here, and one here. I think, you know, that's, that's, could make sense. But I don't think we can, I don't know of a way that we can do it that way. We'd basically, we'd have to open up, uh-
Well, maybe we say large systems have to be municipally owned or large systems have to be a group net metering situation, that people in the community-
I could, I could-
And, and, and call it at that.
Yeah, so that, that's more of a-
And those people will hire PureSarge to do their project for them, but it would be, you know, locally initiated.
Yeah, I, I just, but just saying, okay, here's a big swath of land.
Okay, well, I think we can-
Put up your, 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 your five acre-
I mean, that's pretty much what, at least I think the comfort level here on this board is.
What is?
Is that if it has anything to do with what local people want to do, I mean, not individuals, you know, but, you know, if it's a group net metering type of thing, or that the municipality or the school district would be able to use the power so that-
Yeah, I mean, in, in our, in our mailing last year, Eric, you know, Eric did the heavy lifting on it. What he said was that the, I think it was the four hundred, was it the four, was it the four hundred kilowatt? Was, was the middle, or the, what we were calling-
Sure, yeah, right.
Before, that that was, um, he saw that as a group net metering amount.
Yeah.
Well, sorry, isn't a requirement for group net metering means that the whole development of these is sort of self-limited at some point? Or can we add group net metering for the benefit of Lime residents only? Because then it would definitely be self-limited, you know, there's, there's just not going to be that many of us.
My, my certain answer is I don't know.
So we can't, we can't make that kind of stipulation in, as a zone, as a, as a planning board?
What do you think David?
I really don't know either.
We, we, we enable affordable housing if it's going to be owned and operated by a nonprofit, you know, housing trust. I think that that is similar. We can always ask our council if, if some, something similar could be defined. But I, I, I think that's where the comfort level is. And then, and if we're saying that, then what we're doing is trying to enable local initiative. And municipal, they don't even need zoning. They can go beyond zoning and just establish it.
Well, that's, that's, that's the other thing.
And then what we're doing is shutting down group neighbors that might want to put an array, not on their property, but that they all want to chip in and do that, because they don't want to own their houses. And I guess, the question is how many-
Or can't have them on their-
How many, how many groups like that are there?
I don't know.
Because I mean, I think we decided that thirty to forty acre, if we had thirty to forty acres, we could do the whole town. That would be enough to do the whole town.
I don't think that's right. What, wasn't it, wasn't it thirteen?
No, it would have to be distributed between-
Wasn't it thirteen?
Nine, it was nine.
Yeah, forty acres, I think.
Well, we came up with a total for-
Six or seven megawatts per town?
Nine, it was nine.
Oh, it was nine? I thought it was thirteen.
Nine megawatts.
Oh, six, so nine.
The annual-
That was extra, that was extra.
The next ten acres.
Does that include the-
So I was, I had the-
No, that's, I mean, forty-five is forty, you're, you're-
Forty-five acres. But they wouldn't have to be all together. We can have-
I'm just trying to-
No, again, again, you're using five acres, which is ideal site. That's not going to happen.
I gave you the number, I don't, I can't find it.
I, I think you're right. I think it was nine.
I had the totals from-
You had, you had three totals.
Yes, from New Hampshire Electric Cooperative and Eversource.
Yeah, and then there was a third one you had.
Right.
You came up with thirteen point seven.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thirteen point seven. So that would be, that would be probably about ninety acres.
Three times five, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that was one, yeah, so ninety eight total in town.
Well-
I, I don't think that's going to happen.
It's not happening and, you know.
Look, anyway, so, let, let me, I'm sorry.
I don't know, I just, I just think that, given, you know, what we've heard from at least one member of the public, there may be different points of view on the, um, the benefits, like, you know, lifestyle benefits of putting in solar arrays. You know, and I think the way to, you know, the way that we encouch the question, which was to restrict it to certain districts, to make sure that it had minimal aesthetic impact, to make sure that it, that at least to maintain the incrementality that you were talking about, that at, at least we start out maybe with servicing Lime residents only. I mean, I think, and then if people end up thinking bigger, then it can be broadened.
You know, the, and, and the thinking behind that is that, well, if it gets done, you know, it'll probably be three years before anything significant got done, then people would see it and go, we love this, or-
We hate it.
You know, I never want to see this happening. But, but to just go all in at once, doesn't give people a chance to-
But I think, I think there's a good chance that the sentiment of trying to say, at least, at least participate in trying to save the world is only going to get stronger.
Sure.
And so three years from now, I think it's going to look even better.
Well, not necessarily in terms of this approach, because that, again, that's-
But what other approach is there than to, than to facilitate?
Well, we're, I mean, I'm, I'm encouraging-
I mean, there isn't another, I mean-
There are other approaches that are coming online. But I'm not, I'm not making it in either-
I, I, I think that there are other approaches, but there's always going to be the sense that we should be doing more as a town with, we shouldn't be varying the heads in the same-
I'm not, I'm not saying either or. I mean, you read what I wrote.
Right.
That's not what I'm saying. But, these are twenty-five and a year and up arrays. These are going to be there a long time. I would be really surprised if in five or ten years, people are going to be doing these, these types of things.
I agree with that.
So that's, that's my concern.
And that's why I think the incremental approach is better, to start with a lower acreage and-
I agree.
But, but, or to poll the town and say, look, these are the acreages that, you know, we think make the most sense in terms of trying to visualize and actually to plan for. How do you come in on, you know, two and a half, five, and twenty? You know, do you, what do you think about that?
Sure.
You can't even do twenty though, with that.
No, we, we can't.
No, you, you can't do twenty, but you may be able to do twenty at some point in time. So we need to know an opinion about twenty, particularly since it might be, no, not twenty.
I wouldn't bother with twenty, because we can't do it. And, uh, these, this amendment, I mean, I think another thing to keep in mind about this amendment is it's, uh, just going to be, it might be there for a year, or two years, or three years. But things are changing so rapidly that, uh, it would be surprising if we didn't change this amendment frequently. Just like the, you know, the recommendation in the energy chapter was rewrite the energy chapter frequently. There's too much happening too fast.
But the, I don't know, the technology of, you know, like a photo-multijail solar panel is not changing. That's, the, the sizes are changing, but, but basically, the ones that were installed five years ago are still collecting energy.
Right, but, but there's now film. There's film that's being developed where, where you can just put it on surfaces. You don't have to put it in-
But these are not, these are not cost-effective and won't be for probably a long time. I mean, like the shingles and all this stuff, it's, it's always a bad-
I, I got the vaccine, so I didn't have no problems. Oh, okay, so, look, yeah.
I keep turning, you're saying you can't go to twenty acres. And I thought that the, if it was not a community project, not a net metered project, but just a solar project that's putting power out on the grid, the state didn't have a limitation on that.
That's right.
That's right.
Is that right?
Yeah. So, you can go twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred acres.
Okay, then-
But I think putting in the stipulation, at least, or at least finding out if we can put in stipulation, that, that these have to be net metered.
Right, I'm just saying, I, I want to make sure people are-
So I'm not, I'm not following that. Can you say that again, please?
All right, so if you want to do a community net metered project, you're limited to one megawatt. If you want to do a project that is run by the town-
By the town?
You are limited to five megawatts.
No, it has to be not run by the town, but used by, the power used by the town.
Used by the town, okay.
Right.
You're limited to five megawatts.
Okay.
If you are building a solar system that is just pumping energy into the grid.
Who owns it?
A, a private company owns it.
So commercial, commercial applications have no limit?
Right, they have no limits.
That's right.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, that came out at a previous meeting. So, I'd like to poll the, the board. I had hoped that-
This is New Hampshire, right? A little slant toward incorporation.
Yeah, but, I mean, then, the slant has been very anti-solar, because the fossil fuels have got the ear-
It's also, well, of course, because you're, now you're moving to solar, but you've got to give the energy companies something that they can do to compensate so they don't fall apart. So, of course, they've got Carlange to enlarge the project.
So, with, uh, the board?
Anywhere's the money.
The board, the board, the board. Let's, let's get moving on this. I, I thought we could, um, really come up with, my idea was to have some context so that when we ask these questions, we're not, you know, you, you ask people, do you want one acre, two and a half acres, five acres? What's the context? What are, you know, what are the implications? I thought that was important. But if you just want to have questions, uh, you know, just have questions. But let's get this thing done. This is like dragging on week, meeting after meeting. Let's just bite the bullet. Get the questionnaire and, and move forward.
I'm, I'm gonna make a slightly different suggestion.
Please.
Why? Why don't we ratify substantially the amendment that we're going to bring to the town in this March? And get that in a position that we can say, going forward, let's, let's do that. I think there's no question about the small systems, the ones that we called in the, in that, um, I'm going to, we called the large. I, I guess I would change the word, the name to call the medium systems and set up an acreage. And just change it to say, it's bumpy bump acres, one acre.
Whatever.
An acre and a half, but we could, we could focus in the very near term on nailing that down and then having that ready to go to town meeting next time. And then as a second effort, decide if we want to go and, and think about all these questions in aid of a large system, a megawatt, five acres, whatever. So my proposal is nail down, refine the language of the, what we had for this March. What we're thinking about for this past March. And then separately decide on, on a questionnaire if we want.
Rich, you know, it's boring, you and I always agree. And I'm going to agree with you again. I, I think that's a, it's a really good, it's a really good approach. I really, I, I think it's a great approach.
John?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I, I concur. I mean, I, I think-
One big happy family.
I, I think that if, if we can, whether we go with one acre or two acres, I think we've got something here that, you know, maybe there's a couple tweaks that we need to make. But we can put that before the town. There's going to be, I think that will facilitate an educational process amongst the townspeople. And then as you say, I mean, if, if, if things are really moving and we see the need to, you know, if there seems to be a need for, um, an amendment that would go larger, you know, facilitate larger, then at that point we can. And also it allows, you know, the lead committee to, you know, do their work. And it may turn out that, that that's going to drive the decisions on what the town wants to do for larger solar or any solar for that matter.
Yeah, so I think the only, you know, we'll have to figure out that acreage stuff. But, but in, in principle, I think it's like this.
That would become, that would go for a town vote.
Yeah.
So the only risk it runs is that there's too many people in town that think that's not taking a big enough bite.
No, there's, there's the risk that people will, there's the risk that people will think it's, it's too much as well.
Right.
You know, not everybody, um, I mean, we're generally all, the people who have come to the meetings that have-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm just saying that if you do this questionnaire first, then you, then you have a better idea of where that, where that's going to turn out.
Matt, we did a questionnaire for this.
Right.
We got the feedback last year.
But it was, it was on a limited size.
Well, we sent it out, yeah, yeah.
So, so why don't, you know, I've, I've seen all of your materials. I can put together a list of all the questions and try to refine it down to, you know, groups of questions.
That'd be good.
Do the amendment as it exists, tweaking for acreage.
Change a bit of acreage.
Yeah, changing to acreage and naming it medium. And then with a line in it that says, larger solar arrays will be-
Coming, coming soon to Lime.
Under, under a different-
Near you.
Under a different part of the amendment. And, and so we could then-
I think, I think this is a, it's a really good-
Separate amendment, and then we could send out the questionnaire and let it run its course while we work on housing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's an efficient way to do this.
No, I agree with that. I agree with Rich. But I just have another question. If the town goes with CPC NH and somebody in town is all one hundred percent green with that, and then the town does a group net metering, what happened, I mean, does that person leave CPC NH? And go to the group net metering, or do they stay with?
They said the first thing that Brian was going to be working on is a serious policy, was dealing with group net metering. And not locking people into Eversource.
Why wouldn't we want CPC NH to buy all that, just to make it easy for that? Just to sell to one organization? I mean, that would be the easiest. So that they didn't have the administrative cost, the billing of thirty households.
On CPC NH?
No, they would sell to CPC NH.
Who's selling?
The group net metering.
Oh, that, so, yeah, they would just-
So they did, they would just have one.
But why would they buy it? I don't, I, I mean, I, I guess I'm taking Mark's earlier memo to art that CPC NH is going to be having access to much larger plants that are going to be offering at much lower prices. So why, why would CPC NH really be interested in a one megawatt, even if I could buy one?
You see that recs are all the same price?
It's local, I mean, I think there's value to that.
Yeah, but I mean, the economy of scale is, is driver, is a driver.
And we already know that all green is more than what people are paying now. So, I mean, a certain percentage, maybe many people are not going to want to pay more than-
Is it, is it, because the, the rate I got was lower than, a lot lower than what I was paying.
Yeah, but I, I was under the impression that you could buy twenty-five percent green for even less than all green.
Yes, yes, it's, yeah, that's definitely less than, than quote unquote all green. But the, even the all green was significantly less than Eversource.
Seven cents a megawatt.
At times.
But, I mean, people being, people, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, they don't have, some people don't have the mindset or the discretionary income to-
Right, yeah, of course.
They're going to buy whatever's cheapest.
Of course, of course, understand. All right, um, so I, I don't think I, I caught your name the first time.
Two things. Licky, you mentioned that the recs are going to be used up. In fact-
In fact, hundreds of thousands of recs are going to be created as these major wind, offshore wind power systems come online and the major solar arrays come online. Every time one of those comes online, recs are created, there are always gonna be recs and there will be more and more of them.
Well, I don't, I don't know whether always, but they'll be around for a while.
And, but going back to, to what you all want to do, you, you really want to know what the town wants to do. You don't want to put out an amendment that people are gonna vote down. You need to, I think there are two things that should be, there should be a questionnaire and there are two things that should be touched on. One is the ability of CPCNH to deliver green energy. People, people don't know that yet and they need to know that. And they need to know that CPCNH is going to be buying power, green power, at wholesale rates. And, and intuitively, one would think that it's going to be cheaper than homegrown solar arrays. People should know that. We all love solar power. But why would we put money into, into expensive solar power when we can buy cheap solar power?
Well, I think that's a fair, it's a fair, you know, question to add to the.
And the other question is screening. People love solar power, solar arrays, but they don't want to see them. Many people don't want to see them. I'm, I'm all for solar power if I can't see it.
Well, David, I'm, I'm glad to hear that because you would have loved my proposal, which, which did have a screening component.
Good. I think that'll make all the difference in the world.
But you, you said screaming, right? Because mine has a screaming component. No, no, I thought it was screaming. Okay.
So why don't you all, does anything you want to find out about, make, send them to David? And he can send them to me and I'll try to, for the next meeting, come up with.
Great.
A concise, you know, some of the questions are redundant that you guys proposed, so I'll try to.
Yeah.
Group them and clean it tight, tighten it up.
Send them to David.
Well, I, I mean, that's the right way to distribute information.
Did you get mine? I do not. I emailed to you three or four days ago. I can do it again, or I can, or I can email it, or I can.
Sure.
What's, David, should he, he should send it to you?
Send it to me.
Yeah. So anyway, getting back to, to Rich B's scenario and what David was saying, I think we can do, do what you said and we can also, you know, work on, on the questions and then decide, you know, if we have time, we can send them out now, you know, not now, but, you know, a little later and still follow that, that path. Okay, I'm gonna go to the gentleman in the back.
I'm just curious how you're gonna make the, the conversion from the twenty thousand square feet to acreage. Do you guys have a sense for that yet?
Yeah, I do.
I have a, I have a thought there.
Google.
Is that acreage?
Yeah.
Well, no, the, the twenty thousand square feet was based on the drip edge and just the panel.
Right. So Mark, my, my sense is we just kind of spitballed that number and we said, I don't know, twenty thousand square feet of panel gives enough energy. And I think if we just say, we have an acre, I mean, we can, we need to do some arithmetic to say, how much energy can you get out of a half an acre plot or an acre plot? And if it comes out about the same, I would be, speaking for myself, I'd be very content just to say, oh, half an acre or an acre, or whatever the number comes out to, that's the total affected area of a, what we're now calling a medium array. And it won't be any more or less economically viable than saying twenty thousand square feet of panel space tipped at an angle of thirty-seven degrees and, and all. I mean, I think, so that's, that's my simple answer.
Do you have a suggested acreage?
Well, let me just also answer that question because, although we, we, I think we kind of agreed, but maybe not. This is the mailing that we sent out and where, where is the? So large SES are defined as panel area, forget that, that's the twenty thousand you're talking about. So, and it, he says for context that it would be a four hundred kilowatt system, which would be good for net metering. And he's saying for context, a four hundred kilowatt system might take up as much as an acre of land. So what we sent out to the town was an acre of land.
Yeah.
That seems a little small.
I think it's a little small and because I think it was, it was miscalculated.
Sound small.
Yeah, I think that's, it's actually two hundred, it would be two, two hundred. Yeah. But that's what we told the town, we said about.
It might make sense to actually, I know that panel sizes differ, but go with the standard panel size that something like revision uses and quote the number of panels and the acreage.
I would just stick with acreage.
Well, I just think it's, you know, when you talk about, if you, if you, if you get a sense of, okay, a two acre solar array versus a two acre solar array that contains three thousand panels, I think that has a little bit more of a, there's a little bit more heft to.
Well, we could, we could put a panel limit on it, but.
Well, no, I, I'm just saying, make an estimate just in the question because I think.
Oh, we're not gonna ask them again about, we're not gonna ask questions about the medium size again.
Yeah, I, I would.
You mean that one's gonna, gonna be in, the two, the two to two and a half.
We still have to agree on some parameters, but.
We're gonna, yeah.
We're using that as the framework.
Still, it would make sense to define that one so that they could better grasp what the five thousand or.
Panel, our numbers of panels is going to be confusing because when you look at a, you know, if you look up on the roof, you see one big block of solar panels, but you have to take your time to try to figure out how many panels are part of that array. And there's no standard.
And the technology on them is changing so fast.
And the, the, you know, last year the average panel was about three hundred watts per panel. Now they're looking at like four eighty, but they've increased the size just a little bit. And now they're doing some panels that actually are multi-tiered. And so.
Could be really.
Yeah, so it just, trying to, even looking at the, the tracking systems.
Yeah, you could include a range. I'm just saying that when I read about this and got, I needed to hear how many panels there was plus the acreage to really get a sense of what I was looking at, what I was visualizing.
I just think it's.
Either that or the pictures like that Mark included, you know, with his thing, you know.
I think of the pictures showing.
We could include that picture, say on.
Yeah, I think that, that would be a very fair way.
That's the best idea.
Is that okay? Can we get the copyright on that one?
Sure. But I mean. What are you charging for the copy?
I mean, you can also have different shaped arrays, like you could have an array that has no space in between them. You know, you just have one long array, right? And so I guess that's just making the point that number of panels is gonna be highly variable, I think.
Yeah, and we do want to address, I mean, I do, I'd say, I, I would like to address the issue you brought up, which, which is having some say in how crammed together they can be. I think that's something we, we need to.
Well, interesting. I, I'd like very much to stay out of that business. That, I mean, I presume competent solar designers will put them as close as engineering standards and all.
Right, we save the acreage and then they figure out a way to get more energy out of that acreage.
God bless them.
Is that, yeah, exactly. Is that right?
Okay, well, that's.
Well, I mean, at some point we're gonna be looking at drainage, I think.
Yeah.
But, but that's stipulated.
If they cover the whole area and there's no infiltration of the drainage, then.
But you can't, I mean, they're all slanted, so.
Well, if it's all on a slope and it's all going down faster than it used to, we need to have some sort of mitigation for that.
Yeah, but, I mean, that.
But that's all part of the, that's all written into the.
It's part of our review.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, so we would have a means of addressing it.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
And we need to.
Yes, absolutely.
It's a big impact potentially.
All right, so we have our marching orders. You will be.
Happy to do it.
And we have a path forward, which is not always an easy thing. Thank you, Rich, for, for suggesting that.
I know, we haven't, I haven't seen any materials from, questions from Vicki or from that.
I just found yours, so I will get that, I apologize, I didn't yet.
So the public hasn't, hasn't seen any of our literature, which is unfortunate.
And we, we'd like to see the questions.
Yeah, so.
Five years, give everyone time to get them kind of situated before, you know, throwing out.
Okay.
You know, everybody's versions into the, the public, you know, let's get the board's version.
Consensus, okay.
The consensus of the board, what they want to ask, and then because we get, you know, you start getting so much feedback from.
You have version help.
Right, so it's.
And when you, when you, when we actually, or if we actually do this, I guess it's still a question. There's still gonna be this sort of background.
I hope so.
One or two paragraphs.
Friendly letter.
They try to frame these questions. Yeah, I do too.
So.
Add some amendments to your friendly letter.
Sure, please. All right, well.
So before you adopt the questionnaire, you'll get public input.
Oh, without a doubt, David.
Thank you. Speaking for the public.
Yeah, of course.
You want to make sure screening is included.
Absolutely.
So. Yes.
I have a question. I was wondering if David Robbins could maybe go over the maps that he produced and give us the Reader's Digest synapsis of what, what we should be taking out of the maps? Because there were like three or four of them in there.
Yep.
This, this one is probably a great, the one with the hatching for.
With it force bid?
No, the hatching for the Ridgeline District.
You mean a forest hatching?
No, the Ridgeline District, just the Ridgeline District.
David did a Ridgeline District.
Because that, that really tells you the tale of, I mean, there's shading information in the different, but this, this is the heart of the.
Right. And well, one thing, I think, I think David did within three thousand feet of.
Yeah, I did three thousand.
Instead of a thousand, so we need to take off.
So take two thirds off. The, the outer two thirds, is that right?
Yeah, outer.
The outer two thirds should be shaved, shaved off.
But again, the, one of the things you want to consider is that that's the, you know, thousand lines is to where their equipment, the, the inverters are going to be, doesn't mean.
So they could go further out.
Right, so they could go further out, so probably is not.
It's the next one after this.
Well, I'm gonna start with the beginning and.
So David, would you say take off a half or?
No, I would leave all three thousand because I think it.
It could reach that far.
Yeah.
So tell us what the yellow is.
Okay, so basically, I have, the yellow areas are areas where you could have five acres of, of land that is not, that, first of all, it's within three thousand feet of the three-phase power lines that are within four miles of the substation.
Sure.
So the, the yellow areas are going to be the five acre, I've taken out all the lot lines. So what you're seeing is, you may see areas that look larger than five acres.
Well, I'm, what, can I just be very specific about, you know, my, my neighborhood? If you, because I mean, ground truth is what you always have to do when you do GIS.
So where is that?
That's the corner, Shustrap Road, yes, right there. Shoes, corner of Shustrap Road and Route ten.
Yeah, right here.
That is Bailey's Field and that's a ninety-three acre plot.
Right.
And so I don't understand why that land up next to Shustrap Road.
I can tell you exactly why.
Okay.
Because it's agricultural soils.
So that was not part of the list though of what to remove?
I thought we were removing all the conservation districts.
Conservation district, but not agricultural soil, yes, that's.
You're, you're confusing, I think, conservation easements with the conservation districts. Separate things. Conservation districts are ag soils, steep slopes, wetlands.
Wetland buffers.
Yeah, well, wetlands and the buffers. Those are your conservation districts within the zoning.
I don't think removing agricultural soils makes sense here.
Well, that's, that's. No, we had, we had a discussion, we can revisit it, but let's, we're just.
That's what the parameters of this.
What David's showing us now isn't the question of policy, it's the question of understanding what he did.
Yeah, so, you know, at the moment, you know, we don't allow the development of agricultural soils or, as, small portions of them, but, so we remove those, just areas of those districts out of the potential sites. So what you're seeing is the yellow are areas where there are five acre sites that's potential and the green is areas where there are ten acre, I'm sorry, twenty acre potential sites. Thing to remember is underneath those twenty acres is also five acres. Because if it's a twenty acre site.
Or one acre.
Or one acre, but.
And this also doesn't include any of, of NHECs.
Right, we haven't, I haven't gotten the, I can't find the substations.
I did, I did.
He sent us back to the.
I, I got a name.
Oh, okay.
You want me to contact?
Yeah, if you can contact him just to.
And this is showing the, the blue should go all the way down to Hughes Lane, right?
No, well, no, because it's not within four miles of the substation.
Can I just comment on the four mile thing?
Yep.
So when Beth made that statement, what she was saying is it's, you know, it's good to have it within four miles because that limits your possible upgrade costs that you have to pay for. In other words, the shorter the distance to the substation, the less length of line that you might have to replace. But I clarified with her that there's really no physical reason to limit it to four miles, it's more of an economic thing. And, and via email, she basically confirmed that, you know, if you've got a decent three-phase line, it can be further than four miles, there's just a chance that you may have to, you know, pay a little bit more to upgrade.
So to that, to that point, and this is something I addressed in my, in my submission. Because I, I think it's really important for the board to decide where we want these. Not where that, oh, you know, it could be here, it could be there. Parameters like that are, are very squishy. So it's, it's really incumbent upon us not to say, oh, well, this could, couldn't happen here, it probably won't. If we, if we enable something in an area, it should be because we want it in that area. Not because, oh, well, it'll never happen.
Yeah, I guess my point was just for David Robbins that it may not matter.
Yep.
Where that substation is, you know, I think if you stick to the three-phase lines, that's probably sufficient.
But, yeah, it matters, but your point matters to us because we're, we're tending to rely on parameters that are not reliable.
Yeah.
So hence, I think David should show where all the three-phase lines are. Because.
Yeah.
There's, there are sites that could be developed.
Yep, we can redo this.
And, and all of New Hampshire.
Right, that would just, that would make life a whole lot easier to.
And I think this is the first cut, we haven't gotten to the Ridgeline exclusions and everything else. So we, we are in fact pegging where we don't want with these maps. And then when we see what's left, then we can.
Well, that's not how, look, the, these maps are showing us, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, that these are showing where development could happen. Not, we're, we're not saying it can't happen anywhere.
Isn't Ridgeline a cons, a conserved area?
It, it is, and when I get to that map, I'll, I'll explain.
But as we go through it, this is just the first map.
This is just the first cut, so, right.
And again, this is the first cut, so, you know, if you want changes, let me know, we make changes and, you know, that's, the wonderful thing about GIS is that changes are not terribly hard. So anyway, that, this just shows the, the basic location of where you, where I found five and twenty acre sites that are along the, the four mile limitation of the, the Ham, or the, the resource. The hamper, the the resource.
Okay, and this doesn't show this this orientation south or north or whatever.
Well, it's, it's, north is up to the top of the map.
Well, you're you're talking about the north-facing slope.
That's that's.
That's another, that's another.
That's on another one, that's the yellow one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Robey.
John, apropos of your your comment that if it can be built, it will be built, and I think that the the three-phase lines, just like the uh, the uh substations, are not a limiting factor. When the, when the money is there, the the three-phase lines will be extended.
My my view is that if if we do this, what I what I wrote up was that we should choose a limited area and define it as as a as a starting point, and that that's where where the development can take place. If we want to expand it later, um, that's what I think we should do, but but to have just, you know, if you look at, there's a lot of, depending upon what the board would say, oh, you can't do it here, you can't do it on the, on the, what was it, the Ridge, was it the Ridge Line? Uh, one of them's the Ridge Line.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Yes, this is the Ridge Line.
The one that shows the Ridge Line.
You know, even with the Ridge Line, there there's there's a substantial amount of stuff, and it doesn't include New New Hampshire.
So is the, is the common district is bright green?
Yep.
Is there, where we all, not excluding the.
We excluded them.
But there's a bright yellow spot.
I left the the common district just because it was easier to.
Is that the entire extent of the common district or?
Yes, that is, that green is.
So this, like here, or is this all?
Yeah, I thought it went extended further down these back of the road.
Nope.
But there are areas that the yellow has stomped on the green, I'm just.
Yeah, that's the sand pit, I think that's.
Yeah, that's pretty much the the sand pit, and um, and I think you'll probably also find a good portion of that is the cemetery, so.
And so that's also green, pretty much, or it's it's also off the table.
It, well, we did that, we don't know that.
Yes, no, we did.
If it becomes desperate, it's a perfectly great place to.
The cemetery may have something to say about it.
I agree. Dual use, I mean, it's uh.
I'm I'm gonna.
They're not using it.
I'm gonna leave that alone, but to your point, that my my view is that it since, in my view, is to do this incrementally and and build on should the town have confidence in what in what's happening? You know, we expand and expand. But I I would start by defining a limited area and rather than trying to manage this chaotic arrangement.
David, was there also a forested one?
Yeah, we're talking to that one also.
Yeah, that, because with the stipulation that, you know, which was suggested, that we wouldn't allow it in any place that had been cleared by.
For the last five years.
Purged within the last five years, that would exclude, you know, a a lot of, and and that one seemed to exclude the most.
Okay, yeah, so this one, the reason I show the the Ridge Line District is that part of the um zoning of the Ridge Line District is that if it is not visible from the town's road or waterways, um, you can get permission to develop it, so even though ridge lines are technically non-buildable, there's still the possibility that if you have a site that is not going to be visible, then um, it is, and the the Ridge Line is not just along the Ridge Line, it actually drapes down and comes down close to roads, you know, within thousand feet of roads, so it's not just the high ridge lines, and I can actually show you some fields on River Road that are um within the Ridge Line District.
So David, are you are you saying that the this blanket, even though it's in the Ridge Line District, doesn't assure that it's undeveloped?
Right, that it's undeveloped.
It's just in the district?
It's just in the district.
So it would have to pass an additional test?
And so I didn't take it out, is, you know, the Ridge Line District is a conservation district, I did not take it out of use because there is the possibility that, depending on the site and how it's done, it may not be visible, and you know, especially with panels that are not more than a couple of feet off the ground, it could very easily be not visible from anywhere, and so I didn't want to just take it off the table, it could be, so I did this map to show this area that may or may not be usable.
So David, let me just make sure I understand, the uh, the that cross-hatched area is areas that cannot be seen from?
No, those are the Ridge Line.
That you can't see.
That you can see.
No, it's basically defined, uh, they took the Ridge Line and um basically buffered it out and then clipped it back from the roads, so uh.
So, so if uh, in that, in that large blob uh there, um, you can all see where I'm pointing.
What, which, where, here?
No, no, um, other side of, other side of uh, uh, right, right there, right there, point there, yeah, right there.
This area.
So that can be seen or cannot be seen from?
We don't.
We don't know, it's Ridge Line.
The the Ridge, the Ridge Line District is, has to meet the, meet criteria.
Okay.
That criteria would be investigated on a, on a case-by-case um basis.
It's like a general map of ag soils, you know, we've got the general map from the Soil Conservation Service and now, you know, but you could show, David, that actually you have onsite survey done, and oh, this is not ag soil, so this is like, you know, red flag, just beware.
Yeah.
Could be in the, it could be Ridge Line.
And and so, I I I'm just confused whether it is visible from the road.
That's not the criteria, the criteria for being in the Ridge Line is it must meet additional standards. The standards is that it can't be seen from.
Well, no, so that's not quite true, it's.
The Ridge Line.
Okay.
Except that I'm wrong.
The Ridge Line District was developed by taking and looking at the actual ridge lines, the very, the top of all the ridges, and then creating a buffer out from those, just like a wetlands buffer.
Okay, all right.
And then in some cases, they were clipped back, um, if you look, um, this area right here is a good example where they were clipped back to the road, from the roads.
Okay.
Um, and so that gives you what's defined as the Ridge Line District.
Okay, so, so that is simply, so now, now I understand, that is simply a, an area that deserves additional scrutiny
Right.
to say, is this gonna be visible in an exhaust system?
Right, so if you're looking, if you are proposing a development, I'll, you know, give you another example, um, there is a right in this area here, there is a house that was put in, um, and their house actually sits on the top of the ridge, but it sits back from the Ridge Line, so that when you look at it from the Connecticut River, from any roads, it is not visible. And so the the zoning board allowed it in the Ridge Line District because it can't be seen.
Thank you, I I now understand.
And so the same thing would happen with solar panels, if you are going to put solar panels anywhere in that district, if they cannot be seen by, from a road or a waterway, then the zoning board can allow, or even I can allow it. Um, that's the the criteria.
Thank you.
All right, so that's, I just put that in just to say there may be some areas that are out because of the Ridge Line, but no guarantees because it's site-specific. Okay. Now, this one. What I did was I created a slope map off of our, with the LiDAR data, which is basically um, I think it's a two-meter square that they put, they measured the elevation. You know, you put a grid over the entire town that was two meters by two meters, and grabbed the elevation out of the center of that square, um, and then laid that out. Uh, that would be what the LiDAR data is, and so from that, I can look at areas and say, okay, what is the average slope of that area? Um, so what it does is it will look at um all the elevations in that particular area, and then decide where that slope, the the predominant slope, so this is where I've taken and done that, the yellow areas are your south, um, well, basically south southwest to south southeast, that whole uh ninety-degree um swing. So those are the, going to be the the areas that are predominantly facing south. Uh, when you get into the gray, uh, there, those are going to be your um areas from going towards the west and the east, and then the gray areas are going to be facing towards the north. Doesn't mean you can't put solar panels there, we, I didn't look at elevation change, so you could have a north-facing slope that's a very gentle slope, you could put solar panels, you know, from the south to the north, getting higher.
Well, all of this stuff is ballpark, just to give us an idea, you you can't look at this and say a hundred percent one way or the other, it's just giving us a ballpark.
And that's, you know, a solar company who's gonna develop this, they're gonna look at the sites specifically, they're not going to, you know, they're gonna do something very similar to this and say, hey, this is, this might work out, and then go take a look at it. But it, you know, you know, a good example is along, where you see along the Dorchester Road, all that um slope that's facing from Baker Hill down into uh Grant Brook. That's, you know, naturally not a uh, a great area for solar. So I just wanted to point out that, uh, even though we had a lot of areas that were shown, that uh, some of them may not be real potential sites.
And some that aren't shown might might be.
Yeah. And then the last one was the forest one. In this one, uh, the hatched areas are areas that are forested. Um, now, again, caveat with the the way the data is created, I didn't go through and uh, look at all the the areas and say, well, what's field, what's not, um, again, I use LiDAR data, which is my favorite data. When they send that laser signal down to the ground, it reflects from the ground back up to the airplane that's flying over. Um, and they can measure that, they measure the time that it takes, they know the elevation of the plane, and then that measurement tells them the elevation of the ground. But they don't receive just one reflection, they receive several, and one of them, they can look at it, and when they fly over forest cover in the summertime, the green will reflect a different color than the ground. And so the trees reflect a different color at a different time, and so they can look at the color shift and the time difference, and they can figure out how high the canopy is off the ground, and so what I did is I took the the canopy data, and I looked at anything that was over uh six meters high. And said, and I I compared that to a lot of the aerial photography, and found that those areas pretty much match matched up with um, the fields, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say six meters, I was six feet, so three meter, uh, two meters.
Six feet.
Yeah, but that, again, that that number seemed to give us the uh, the proper um, areas, um, beyond that, it kind of pushed it back, and I think what we're seeing is the edge of the the fields, the reflections are not as dense, because your, the trees are um, kind of thinning out as we get towards the the edge of the forest.
So do we have anything that that, right now, we don't have anything that restricts people from cutting the forest down, but that's something we could think about, and and what you.
Well, no, we can, I mean, what, we can, we can give a five-year.
Well, you can't tell people they can't cut trees.
No, you can't tell, people can cut trees, but you can, it was actually, last, last meeting.
And you can, the solar.
Yeah, the last meeting, Meg, it was actually Meg Sheehan's um recommendation.
Yeah, right, which which had significant reservations.
Yeah, that's fine, we can, you know, so, yeah, that's why we're all here.
Right.
It's not that you can't cut trees, that you can't develop a site, the solar, when you have the trees within five years.
This is what you're suggesting.
I'm not suggesting it, but it was suggested in the last meeting.
But that approach, which is not universally loved, um, would disqualify the site from.
Right.
For five years, for five years.
For five years, but again, let's say the the limit was was an acre that we use. That field would have to be a hundred percent, it, you can cut down up to an acre, so that field's not disqualified.
And again, because trees, forested areas have been brought up a couple of times, that's why I just did this map, is something to to show as a, another example of.
That's good.
Can I ask a question about the ag soils issue, so the ag soils does, uh, you can develop in ag soils if you conserve the whole lot, and then you can develop up to twenty-five percent.
Up to twenty-five percent, however, as as the ordinance stands now, unless we change it, uh, solar energy systems are not a listed use.
Correct.
So, the, if we were gonna provide for that, it would have to be changed.
So to that point, David, I guess I I would like you to make a map that um does not exclude ag soils, because I think it would be interesting to see what further development capabilities there would be.
Well, so how, is that for your workload?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, an hour or so, just to, it's more just processing time.
Okay.
Computers to be displayed.
Yeah, well, there's some, I, there were a couple other maps I wanted to do, but uh I'd left the the computer processing overnight, and it was still trying to chug along in the morning, and I said, that's just not gonna work.
An unused CPU embedded is gone forever, however.
So, um, we we are ten of nine, have people had enough? Okay. I would like to make a motion while my voice lasts, that uh, we we get out of here, and I'd like to thank all of our our public genuinely for for coming, we really appreciate you taking the time.
Well, I think the public is very grateful for what you all did.
Well, we'll wait and, we'll reserve, we'll reserve judgment.
We'll.
We're grateful for the time, you said.
The time, yeah, not necessarily the result, but, thank you. Yeah, and then and then swallow it.
So don't forget, send David your good questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Maybe I have to.